Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
The highest motion carries.
All right, the next item is the regular section of Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me, please. Follow my direction. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Keith, we can hear you typing. Can you mute that?
Yeah, I was actually typing a chat to Kyle. It doesn't sound like Peggy's mic is on to us, so we can't quite hear Peggy. We can hear-
Can you hear me?
It's very faint compared to Lindsey. I'm sorry, compared to Councilwoman Steve.
It's on.
Oh, there, that's better.
Okay. Thank you all. All right, now, please remain standing.
Our Father in heaven, we thank the opportunity we have of being here tonight. We're thankful for those that are leading the council, for the service they have given us, and we pray that that will bless those of us that are still on the council, our new members, that we will be guided by thy Spirit to do the things that thou would have us do for this community. Father, at this time, as the coronavirus is spiking through our community, we pray that thy Spirit will be with us, that you might support those who have COVID in their families, and that you might watch over and bless the family of George Bertrand, as he has passed away from this COVID disease. And we are thankful for the blessings we do enjoy, and we invoke thy Spirit to be with us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Thank you all. Thank you, Mike.
And Mayor, if I may, before we get started, I just wanted to let everybody out on YouTube and that's watching know that we are in the middle of a council upgrade for the video audiovisual. So if there are any bugs, we're working them out, so please be patient with us. But that's what we're dealing with tonight. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew. Thank you.
Thank you, Rika. I would like to say thank you to our staff. My goodness, if those of you can't see what's going on, the IT people, your guys are amazing.
You need to get closer, Peggy.
Can you hear me yet?
Get really close, like two inches.
Okay, we're all gonna have to get closer then.
Yeah.
Okay, let's become very good friends with our mics, everybody. Okay, the next item is presentations, Chief.
So I only have one tonight. So as we're getting around to all the earthquake awards and stuff, there were two that I wanted to give out before they left. So Mayor, if you wouldn't mind coming down. It is quiet. So a lot of people did a lot of things during the earthquakes of last year, and we were in our conference room for a long time. And the mayor and Supervisor Gleason were in there quite a few hours as well. And so I'd just like to thank them for helping us with everything during that time. And from the PD to you, thank you for everything that you did for us.
Thank you. Can I say something?
Sure.
I am gonna have the opportunity to speak, but I wanted to tell everyone that Mick and I sat in that, in the back conference room during the second earthquake, and we looked at each other, and all of our staff is running around crazy. They're just, and they weren't crazy, they were doing everything. They were doing all the things they trained for, led by an amazing person who made it all happen. And I am so proud when Mick and I looked at each other and we, after they drug me out of the room, because Jed grabs a hold of my hand because I'd fallen down and dragged me out of the office. But Mick and I looked at each other and we said, there's nothing we can do except be here to support them. And if people are so, we'd gotten a call from the governor, and we'd gotten a call from Congressman McCarthy, and from Vince Fong, and Shannon Grove, and everybody you can think of. And there is the man, the star, the man who made it happen, and his staff. And so I'm very proud of all of them. And when Mick and I went home the next day, because we didn't make it home that night, we said, we have a team, because the county, state, feds, everybody was here to support us, the city of Ridgecrest, and led by an outstanding person, and I thank you, Chief. Okay. All right. What a surprise. Thank you. Okay, the next item is public comment items that are not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. How are we seeing if there's anyone calling in? Is this different? Who?
We have somebody.
Oh, okay. All right. Is there anybody online who wants to speak? All right, then, anyone who's in the building, please come up and speak now.
No, he's got someone calling in.
I know what I'm asking him.
Caller.
Are they ready?
Yeah, the caller is on there.
Okay. Caller? Caller, please identify yourself and state your comment or concern.
Hello, Mayor Breeden, this is Renee Westalusk, and I wanted to bring up two things. One is redistricting just around the corner, coming up in 2021, and it's going to affect our congressional district, we're in, and our state senate district, and our assembly district, and also our supervisory district. And I wanted to make sure all the outgoing elected officials and all the incoming and present elected officials know about it, because our community's gonna have to get together and come together with leaders and form a strategy on how we want to give public testimony when they have the redistricting hearings coming up next year. I just wanted everybody to be aware of it. And then, secondly, I wanted to thank you, Mayor Breeden, for your outstanding leadership in getting this community through the two major earthquakes of 2019 and the thousands of aftershocks that happened after the quake. I also want to commend you for your tireless efforts on solving our water issue. And thirdly, I want to thank you for giving direction to our community during the COVID-19 crisis and making everyone aware that we need to support all our businesses in town. I can't thank you enough for your steady hand and calmness in getting us through all these major challenges. And I'm sorry that you're leaving office now, but I know you'll still be active in the community, and we can use your input for redistricting. I thank you very much for everything you've done for our community.
Thank you, Renee. It is a team effort, and nobody does it alone. And we have a great staff and great colleagues, and so I thank you on their behalf also. And we discussed that redistricting at the Channel Lake Alliance meeting. You filled us in on a whole lot. I urge us to be very, very careful about what's happening here, because if we get separated away from Kern County, or we get separated away from the San Joaquin Valley, I do not want to see us be put somewhere else, because we didn't stand up and be counted. So please, this is very, very, very important, and I thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other callers? Okay, seeing none?
No, there is.
No.
Now they are. Okay. Caller, please identify yourself and state your concern or questions.
Okay. My name is Mike Neal. And I'm hearing a lot of feedback still with the telephone, but I'll try to receive. I'm calling in to lodge a formal complaint with the fact that the staff once again is taking opportunity to close the city council meetings off to the public. If you consider the fact that the public's been shut out of the meeting, but yet we're looking at all the council members up there with no distancing, no mask on, staff there with no mask on, you know, nothing of standard protocols to supposedly prevent this virus spread being done other than keeping the public out of the meeting. Now, as of yesterday, I had to inform at least two people that, no, you can't go to the meeting. They've closed it off again. You know, and got the usual statement of disappointment about that, because people are interested in being down there, talking to you face to face. And I'll tell you what the response was. The response was, yeah, well, they don't really want us down there anyway. Well, unfortunately, holding this meeting the way you are, cutting off the public from actual participation, you know, physically being in the room, and what I've already delineated about what the council and staff are not doing to demonstrate trying to prevent the spread of the virus is basically kind of hypocritical, and it makes the public feel like they're not desired to be down there. And I thought for a long time that was not the message that was wanted to be conveyed. So I'm asking for the end to this, cutting the public out of the meeting, especially if you're gonna be holding them the way you are holding them tonight. That's all.
Mike, I would like to say this, since I'm gonna be going off the council, I can be even more extremely honest with you. Anybody who thinks they aren't wanted or needed to participate in these meetings is absolutely ignoring what we've said and what we've done. We have begged you to call in. We are spending a small fortune upgrading all of this, so your call-in is more pleasant, more easy, and that you can hear. And so, public, if anybody you view is listening to Mr. Neal and assuming that he is speaking for us, that we don't want you here, that is incorrect. You are wanted, needed, and we beg you to please call in. And as soon as we have this all set up where it's easy for everybody to come in and participate, some of you may choose to not even come here and still participate, even though you can. Now, right now, we are doing the responsible thing, and because of the fact that we're going through all this reinventing of the speakers and all of that, we had to sit close together today, because all of it was not done. And Ms. Stevens wanted to be able to speak, and we wanted her to be able to speak. So we are sitting not five feet apart, but we all have our COVID protection. We washed, and nobody is spitting on each other. So thank you, Mr. Neal, for being concerned about the public, but you know what? So are we. Thank you. All right, is there another caller?
Yes.
Caller, please identify yourself and state your concern.
Caller, please identify.
Caller, please identify yourself and state your concern.
Hello, this is Carol Vaughn from the Ridgecrest Area Association of Realtors, and we're calling tonight to express our gratitude to Mayor Breeden and to Councilwoman Lindsey Stevens for your service to our community and all the efforts you make on behalf of our community. We're very grateful for your help, and we just wanted to say thank you very much.
I can speak for myself when I say thank you. It's an honor to serve in Lindsey.
The same, yes. Thank you for allowing us the privilege to serve you.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Kind words.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, is there another caller out there?
Yes.
Caller, please identify yourself and state your name and questions and concerns.
I thank you. Bye-bye. Is there another caller out there? Yes. Hello?
Hello. Please, caller, identify yourself.
Yeah, this is Dave Matthews. Something is a little different here. I don't know what's going on, but it does sound a little bit more timely, so to speak. Time, no time delays or whatever. But I wanted to ask something here, because I did not get the word that the meeting was gonna be closed until just a while ago. And I am on the email list for all the notices for the council meeting. I don't know why I didn't get that before I read the Daily Independent at this evening. There's, I don't know when it went out, if it did, but I didn't get the notice in the email. But now, what I want to do at this point in time is, first of all, thank Mrs. Stevens for her service. I certainly believe that she should have been mayor, but that's my personal choice. I also would like to know, when is the swearing-in of the new council coming up? After public comment? I don't have my agenda up in front of me.
It is, sir.
Thank you. All right, are we gonna have comment after that or not?
We are not having public comment after the swearing-in, no.
Okay, well, then I'll say it right now. Just like Joe Biden, Eric is not gonna be my mayor. And it's not because he's not a good guy. It's not because he hasn't done a lot for this community. That's not the reason. The reason I object to him being elected mayor is because two of our local representatives, from the federal and the state, came out and endorsed him. And I don't think that's right for them to do, because they never, as far as I recall now, they haven't, neither one of them have been over here in over a year, unless they're hiding behind doors in the desert Federal Credit Union or something. Because I haven't seen them, and I usually keep an eye out for those kind of happenings. But I think the next council should maybe consider an ordinance or something where our local candidates for office cannot get endorsements from other higher-level, so to speak, offices. Offices, period. Not just particular people, but offices. So that's all I've got for now, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I hope that never happens. Thank you. I think they have the right to express their opinions, just like you.
Can I make a comment?
But thank you, sir.
Mayor, can I make a comment? Eric, I don't want you to take that personal, because when Peggy and I were elected six years ago, he said the same thing about us. He didn't vote for us either.
Okay. Is there any other ones wishing to call in, state their concerns, or ask a question? I see none. Okay, so we will end the public comment. Council announcements. Anyone? Okay, no council announcements. We will go to item two, administration and presentation of certificates of election, oaths of office to newly-elected mayor and council members.
Yes, ma'am, I will take that one. I'd like to ask that Mr. Solomon Rajaratnam and Mr. Eric Bruin come up. And just so everybody's aware, Kyle was sworn in earlier today, so he's not gonna take the oath right now, but he has been sworn in. Sorry.
Thank you, Kyle.
And I'm gonna do both these gentlemen at the same time, so if you'll both raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations to you both. Virtual handshake. There you go. And you are welcome to grab your things and come on up here and rightfully take your seats, and I'll have you sign your stuff.
And we will rightfully depart.
Mayor and Ms. Stevens, please don't leave. We have some presentations we'd like to do to you for each of you.
Lighting? It's blue. Blue means there's a call. Okay. Got it. Too bad I'm colorblind. Too bad I'm colorblind, and I'm not gonna see it. I am colorblind, yeah. I'm actually red-green, red, it's a blue-purple or red-orange? I did. I did, I did. I just want to explain, I am gonna wear my mask during the courses. For those of you who don't know, we've had a situation in my work, and I am trying to respect the wishes of everyone. I was tested negative this morning, but I want to make sure that I'm sending the message to the community that COVID is a reality and something that we all have to respect. So moving on with our session, we first have presentation to outgoing council member Stevens and to Mayor Breeden. Let's stand.
Yes, Mr. Breeden. Lindsey, Peggy, you guys want to come up there for a second? We have just a couple of presentations for you. One of the things the city has not done in the past is provide plaques of appreciation for outgoing mayors and council people. I think it's something important for you guys to take something with you that you can cherish, that your children can cherish of your time as a public servant. And I know that, you know, a lot of times, your job is, doesn't get a lot of thanks, but it has a lot of value. The community doesn't always appreciate the amount of time that you spend preparing for the meetings, working behind the scenes, addressing citizen concerns, but staff does. I do. I do have to say that both of you are probably some of the most committed public servants that I've had to work with when it came to being elected officials, the amount of time you guys spent, how much you cared about, you know, items, how willing you were to sometimes look at the other side and learn from other folks. I know from myself, I'm gonna miss working with both of you. I think that I would encourage you guys to stay engaged in the community, because we need more citizens in the community to care about this community moving forward. So what I have is we have a couple plaques. One for Lindsey Stevens that signifies, you know, council member from December 14 to December 18, and then mayor pro tempore from December 2018 to December 2020. With that, we also have a proclamation that I'll have Rika read for you right now.
A proclamation of the City of Ridgecrest, California, honoring Ridgecrest citizen and council member Lindsey Stevens. Whereas Lindsey Stevens was elected and appointed to serve on the Ridgecrest City Council as a council member and installed on December 7, 2016. And whereas Lindsey served as mayor pro tempore from December 18, 2019, to December 16, 2020. And whereas, throughout her tenure, giving generously over time on various other city committees and organizations vital to this community. And whereas Lindsey has worked tirelessly to create new laws and policies that support and improve our local government and that help local officials provide better service to our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the city council of the city of Ridgecrest does hereby honor, recognize, and extend our appreciation to Lindsey Stevens for her devotion and exceptional service to this community and her dedication to the city of Ridgecrest, proclaimed this December 16, 2020, and it's signed by all of the new council members.
I have another plaque for Peggy, for signifying mayor from December 14 to December 2020.
Thank you.
And then I have, Rika's gonna have an opportunity to read to you.
A proclamation of the City of Ridgecrest, California, honoring Ridgecrest citizen and mayor Peggy Breeden. Whereas Margaret Peggy Breeden was elected and appointed to serve on the Ridgecrest City Council as mayor and installed on December 3, 2014. And whereas, throughout her tenure, giving generously over time on various other city committees and organizations vital to this community. And whereas Peggy has been an avid supporter of local schools, businesses, and infrastructure needs within the community. And whereas Peggy has worked tirelessly to create new laws and policies that support and improve local government and that help local officials provide better service to our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the city council of the city of Ridgecrest does hereby honor, recognize, and extend our appreciation to Margaret Peggy Breeden for her devotion and exceptional service to this community and for her dedication to the city of Ridgecrest as mayor, proclaimed this December 16, 2020, and signed by the entire council.
We do have one more award for Peggy, and then I'll obviously offer you guys the opportunity to say something before we go. So this is a-
A book?
Yeah, it's a book. It's a Congressional Record prepared by Congressman McCarthy's office, signed by Kevin McCarthy, prepared by his staff. I'll let Rika read it.
Okay, please bear with me. Honoring, the House of Representatives honoring Peggy Breeden on her retirement as mayor of the city of Ridgecrest. Honorary Kevin McCarthy of California in the House of Representatives, December 16, 2020. Madam Speaker, I rise today to honor Peggy Breeden, a community leader, cancer survivor, friend, and mayor of Ridgecrest, California. After having led the city of Ridgecrest over the last six years, Peggy is retiring as mayor. Peggy was born in Syracuse, New York, on her family's dairy farm, where she and her siblings all worked tending and milking over 100 cows that her family raised. In fact, Peggy's family farm only received electricity in 1952, making her no stranger to hard work in the face of adversity. In 1982, she moved to Ridgecrest to be with friends and family and went on to own The Swap Sheet, a local advertising weekly newspaper. But she also had a calling for public service. In addition to managing her business, she served on numerous local boards and foundations, including the Indian Wells Valley Water District, Saracosa Community College Foundation Board, the Eastern Current Air Pollution Control District, and the Navy Community Council. She took her commitment to serving the community of Ridgecrest a step further by successfully running for mayor, making history both as Ridgecrest's first female mayor and as the first elected mayor since the office became its own position, directly elected by city voters. Peggy's soft-spoken and unassuming manner should not understate her intense dedication to Ridgecrest, demonstrated leadership skills and political acumen. She showcased these qualities as she dealt with one of the largest crises to ever face Ridgecrest. In July 2019, Ridgecrest experienced the largest earthquake in over 20 years, which included two separate 6.4 and 7.1 magnitude earthquakes that did an estimated $3 billion worth of damage in the city and to the surrounding communities- damage in the city and to the surrounding communities of Eastern Kern County, including Naval Air Weapons Station China Lake. Peggy sprang into action right away to help the residents of her community, working tirelessly with state and federal officials to ensure that buildings and infrastructure were safe and that residents had access to food, shelter, and water immediately following the natural disaster. In the aftermath of the earthquakes, Peggy successfully worked to ensure that the President of the United States declared a major disaster, which opened federal assistance programs and funding for displaced homeowners, renters, and business owners, so life could return to normal as quickly as possible. However, the earthquakes were not the only major challenge Peggy helped guide Ridgecrest through. This past year, she led the city through the ongoing coronavirus pandemic, working with the city council and residents of the community to make sure that the city remained financially sound so it could continue operations despite the economic downturn from various stay-at-home orders. Peggy also worked hard to ensure that negotiations between the city and the U.S. Navy remained on track to build a new wastewater treatment plant on Nars China Lake to serve both the interests of the Navy and Ridgecrest. This project has seen its up and down and over the years, but her steadfast commitment to it set the stage to help ensure it will come to fruition. While her achievements as mayor may have made headlines, Peggy's tenure as mayor is best defined by the everyday interaction she has with the people of Ridgecrest. Through devastating earthquakes and a rapidly spreading virus, to working to address sustainable groundwater policies and supporting the mutual interests of China Lake and Ridgecrest, Ridgecrest residents have always been able to count on Peggy to have their backs. It has been an honor to work alongside Mayor Peggy Breeden over the past six years while she served in elected office for Ridgecrest. I am proud to count her as a friend. I cannot thank her enough for her work in our community over the years. On behalf of the Ridgecrest community and the 23rd Congressional District, I want to wish her the best as she leaves public service and begins the next chapter of her life, and it's signed by Mr. Kevin McCarthy.
Thank you. Good luck on the call.
Yes, I just first want to say thank you to everyone who voted for me, and it was an honor serving you over these past four years. I'm very proud of all the things we've gotten accomplished, and it was such a privilege. So many of the staff people have become dear friends, and it was just a real blessing in my life that I never expected to do this, but it's been fun, and there's been rough spots, but thank you all.
I want to thank my colleagues, because as I say, this is not a lone wolf job. It takes commitment and service from all of the council, and more importantly, commitment and service from all of our staff, and we have, without a doubt, the world's best staff. I don't know, all of you don't have the opportunity for the interaction that I was proud to have with them, and I am grateful for the ability that they gave me to serve, understanding situations, knowing when to shut up and when to speak. And that is a very difficult thing to do, because when you're trying to do everything and be everything to everybody, you cannot. And so it is our staff that makes it easier, possible, and I thank them from the bottom of my heart. It is a team effort, and team, I leave the city in good hands. Thank you.
Mayor Bruin, if you would be so, if you could take the next phone call, please, real quickly before we move on.
We have one caller. Caller, please state your name.
Norman Alexander.
On the green light. Caller, please state your name.
This is Norman Alexander with the Ridgecrest Area Association of Realtors, and we just wanted to call in, and Carol called in a little bit earlier, but just wanted to thank both the strong women that helped lead our community, our city, through some tough times, through the pandemic, through earthquakes, and even through our water thing. So those flowers are just a presentation to say thank you for your commitment to the city. You both will be missed. Unfortunately, we have nothing but guys up there now, and we won't have that steady reasoning from a lady, but we thank you for being committed to our community and the work that you've done, and hopefully you will continue on and support us. But again, the Realtor community thanks you. You've done a tremendous job, and God bless, and happy holidays to you.
Thank you, Norm. Is there a second one? Is there this one? This one, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Thank you, Peggy. Both of you guys were, have been incredible servants of the city, and we greatly appreciate it. Our next action item is, I believe we will be going into public comment on the closed session topic, which will be, we'll be entering in immediately following this, if there is any public comment on the closed session. Yes, caller, say your name.
Yes, my name is Mike Neal, and my comment on the closed session item here is, you know, this has been going on now for a long time. We, all the public that's been paying any attention knows exactly what this item is about, just seeing it going into closed session. We know it's about more negotiations in favor of the casino developer and giving them time to someday come up with money to buy the land. Now, this has been going on for three years now, and they still can't come up with the money, and for some interesting reason, which I've not had the staff or anybody else respond to me on as to why in the world they're doing this at this point, since the option runs out in February, so we're all guessing as to why that is, but it's really interesting that, you know, as soon as we get our new council people and mayor in, boom, this is on the agenda, and I can say for, I know for a fact, I've been watching votes and elections over the last couple of cycles, more than half the city does not want this thing in this town, and yet it was pushed on us big time, and I'm urging the council members to discontinue any agreement for the land sale with the casino developer and put an end to this.
Okay, thank you, caller. Do we have any other callers? Caller, say your name.
Hello? Hang on. What's going on? I'm getting feedback, but I don't know why. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay. This is Dave Matthews, probably in L. I did not realize this was a closed session, because I heard that it was an open session, so I kept a better look at the agenda more closely than I thought. But the, I have information from alternate sources, let me say that, that the casino deal has been, had an investigation into the Bureau of Indian Affairs. So I don't think you're going to get, they're going to get the money, unless, of course, Mr. Biden pulls some strings and hands it to them, I don't know. Anyway, I don't think you're going to get it, so I wouldn't go ahead and give them the delay. This stuff has been going on long enough, so bye.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other callers? No other callers? Do we have any public comment? No public comment? We'll go into closed public comment on the closed session and enter into closed session. We'll be back in roughly 30 minutes. At 7:14 PM. Next item on the agenda is the city attorney report. Keith, are you on the line?
I am, I am. The board met in closed session to discuss real estate negotiations for the real estate listed in the agenda. The city council received a report from negotiator Ron Strand. No reportable action took place, and Mr. Mayor, that concludes the report.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence, with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. I will now read each item. First, we have a proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City Council Successory Development Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority Regular Meeting dated December 2, 2020. We have an application for the United States Department of Justice Brin, Brin?
Burn.
Burn, Justice Assistance Grant. We have the proposed action to adopt a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council reciting the facts of the consolidated general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 3, 2020, declaring the results, and such other matters as provided by law. And last, we review and approve the recognized obligation payment schedule for 2021-22 and administrative budget for fiscal year 2021-22 of the successor agency to the Ridgecrest Redevelopment Agency and approval of resolution. Do any members of the council wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, does any, does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar. Second.
Roll call vote?
Mayor Bruin.
Roll call, because Kyle's on the phone, right?
Yes. Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next item is, on the agenda is the nomination and appointment of Mayor Pro Temp and Vice Mayor.
I would like to nominate Scott Hayman as the Mayor Pro Temp.
And my understanding is Mayor Pro Temp is the second, and then the Vice Mayor is the third, is that?
That's correct. Mayor Pro Temp would be taking over in your absence.
Okay.
Vice Mayor would be taking over if both of you were gone.
Okay, and I've been asked to nominate Ms. Rajaratnam. I'm a, I just
You can call me Solomon.
I just call you Raj, because that's what we've done for 16 years. I would like to nominate Solomon for the Mayor Pro Temp position. Also, do I have a second on either of those motions?
Let me give you a second on Dr. Hayman.
Okay, I have a second for Dr. Hayman, and my motion dies without action. I have a motion for appointment of Dr. Hayman and for Mayor Pro Temp. Do I have a nominee for Vice Mayor? I will nominate Solomon for that position. I'll second that, and I have a second. So I have a motion for the approval of Mayor Pro Temp being Dr. Hayman and for Vice Mayor being Solomon. Do I have a, roll call vote, right? Because I have first and a second.
Yes, sir.
Okay, roll call vote? Don't get used to this.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
It is really weird, because I'm used to very common social structures, so this is going to be taking some getting used to. Huh? Oh, it's just, I want to be proper, and I'm trying to be, so, for all those out there. Next item is item number nine, Mayor Bruin with concerns with concurrence of the council. We'll appoint members to the Planning Commission and council committees, boards, and commissions. Ricka?
Yes, sir. We can take this one person at a time, and you can speak about your nominees, or we can go one, we can just do Planning Commission and then go on each one. How would, what's your preference? Does anybody have a preference?
Let's go by commission, probably.
We'll do Planning Commissioners first, and then I guess Measure B, and then we'll go through the rest, maybe in a lump.
Okay, we'll start with Planning Commission, and Mr. Bruin, if you would like to go first.
I have asked and agreed for Bernie Mandragon, I've got to make sure I properly pronounce his name, who is the owner of Bernie's Landscaping and the current chairman of the Ridgecrest Chamber of Commerce to serve as my appointee on the Planning Commission. A young businessman, family guy, and I think he brings a lot of new perspectives to the commission in terms of planning and development.
Here, I've got two. I brought two this time, just in case.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Would you like to go next?
Yes, my nominee is for the Planning Commission is a repeat of Warren Cox as my commissioner. Next thing, everybody knows him, so.
Okay, for the Planning Commission would be a continuation of Vanessa Hayman.
For Planning Commission, I am renominating Travis Reed.
And Mr. Blades?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Bill Pierce Jr. as a continuation.
That means four of the five members are continuations, which is fantastic.
And we can take a vote on these individually as we go along, or we can do them after we do them all, we can agree, so.
Do I have a motion on all five nominees?
I move approval of the five nominees for Planning Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next commission would be the Measure V Committee. I have appointed a civil servant who has served this community for years and years and probably knows this city as well as Mayor Breeden knows it, or former Mayor Breeden knows it, as I said, Peggy, and that is Marshal Chip Holloway for Measure V.
Mr. Mauer?
I don't currently have an appointee. My appointee has resigned, and I haven't come up with a new name yet.
Okay. Mr. Hayman?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Christian West as the Measure V Committee member. Christian has shown his youth and desire to serve the city and his consistent, pernacious attitude toward it, and I think he'd make a great person in addition to the Measure V, Christian. So if you accept it, we welcome you and love to have you.
Good man.
Thank you.
For Measure V, I have nominated John Paul. He's the chief operating officer of New Direction Technologies, and he previously worked on the base, dealt with millions of dollars budget, so for the record, he is my brother also.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blades?
Yes, there's a continuation, Mr. Jeff Morgan.
Okay, so we have four seats filled at this time.
Who did he say was?
Jeff Morgan.
Jeff Morgan, okay, thank you. Okay, so we have four nominees. Do I have a motion for approval of those nominees?
Motion approved.
I have a second. Second. Roll call vote?
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, I also have not yet filled the, my positions for the other commissions, which I believe is the Personnel
Construction.
Construction and, what was the third one?
Handicap, yes.
Handicap.
In all fairness, those committees haven't met in the six years I've been on the council.
But we would like to
But we would like you to fill.
Yes. So I do know there are some nominations for the Personnel Commission. Mr. Mauer, you have a nomination?
Yes, I have a nomination of Mike Avery for the Personnel Commission.
And Mr. Rajaratnam?
I have Rajaratnam.
Okay, and Mr. Blades?
I do not have a nominee for Personnel, but I do have a nominee for
Okay, so right now we have two seated, which is Mr. Avery and Mr. Usuri. Can we get a motion on that?
Do I have a motion for preapproval of the two appointed members for the Personnel Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Five, five ayes, motion carries. And then for Construction Appeals Board, I believe we have one person that's being nominated by Mr. Rajaratnam.
Mike Ferguson, I'm sorry.
Does anybody else have a nomination for Construction Appeals?
I do not at this time, but I have somebody who I will bring forward at a future date.
Ricka, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Can, can there be the same appointee on a few of these committees?
I don't see why not.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any.
Okay, so we have, need a motion for Mr. Ferguson.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the one nominee for the Construction Committee?
So moved.
On the second. Second. Roll call?
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries. The last one would be the Handicap Access Appeals Board. Mr. Rajaratnam has a nominee?
Chris Hill from State Farm.
And Mr. Blades?
What was his name?
Chris Hill.
Yes, I'm Chris.
And Kyle has Ryan Smith, who has previously served, he's going to continue.
Okay. Do I have, do I have a motion for the approval of the two gentlemen nominated by Mr. Blades and Mr. Solomon for the Handicap Access?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mayor, Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries on that.
Before we move off this item, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
If there's anyone out in the public that is interested in serving on Measure V, as my appointee, I would appreciate if they would call me, because I would love to get that position filled, and my phone number's 760-371-2080.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's the next one up.
So the next ones are going to be discussions among yourselves to who wants to serve on which boards. We can start with the Action Committee, it needs two council members. Are you guys prepared to talk about this tonight? Has everybody looked into the committees? If you have not, we can continue it till the next meeting, and you can all have time to talk about it, it's whatever your preference is.
Does anybody know ones they specifically want to continue to serve on, that maybe we can knock those out?
I'm on, I'm on infrastructure, I'd like to stay on infrastructure.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm on the Economic Development Committee, and I wouldn't mind staying there, have a few others interested as well.
I apologize, Kyle, did you say stay or go? I broke up right in the middle.
I would like to stay.
Okay, great, sorry.
Which committee is that?
Economic Development.
Oh, there it is.
So I'm currently on the Finance and the Quality of Life or Parks Committee, so I'm comfortable staying where I'm at.
There's a couple of other things I'm on. I'm also the city's representative to Kern Cog, and I'm the city's representative to the East Kern Air Pollution Control District. And that's, I just didn't go ahead and stay on those for now.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I am the city's representative for the League of California Cities, and I would like to stay on that as well.
Okay.
Mr. Rajaratnam, do you have a preference on any of them? Not at this time?
Need to put this back on the agenda for next meeting.
I'm just asking, does any, you have a specific desire, obviously, I desire to serve on Finance, and I desire to serve on Quality of Life, those are two that are closer to me that I feel like I know better, but I would love to have, I know, Scott, you've worked on Finance, correct?
Correct.
There's two available on Finance.
So that would be you two, then.
It could be myself and Scott, it could be myself and Solomon, I know Solomon has a desire for Finance as well.
You're taking.
Okay.
And so.
We have two upside.
Go ahead, Kyle.
Yeah, sorry about this lag, I didn't mean to step on Solomon, that's rude, I was just trying to express that I would like to be on the Infrastructure Committee.
You broke up, can you say that again?
I would like to be on the Infrastructure Committee.
Infrastructure.
That will, that will put two of us on there.
That puts two on Infrastructure, and that's fantastic.
We need someone else on Economic Development.
Somebody else on Economic Development.
I can be on Economic.
Okay.
And we need a backup for Kyle for League of California Cities, for some reason if he couldn't go, we need an alternate.
Right. I would like to be that alternate if somebody else wishes to be.
It's fine with me.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Councilman Mike Mauer for the alternate for the Indian Development and Water Authority Board, as the city's alternate.
And is that with you staying as the primary representative?
So Scott is asked to stay as the primary representative, is there any other conversations in regards to? Okay, I support that. Mike? Okay. Kyle?
Yep.
Okay.
That pretty well does it, doesn't it?
So I think we're still missing, let's see, two on Infrastructure, two on Quality of Life, two on Finance, one on Water.
City Org, if they were to meet, we need two people sitting on City Org.
Well, that's right, I'm on City Org.
I certainly don't mind sitting on that if necessary.
That was one Peggy was on, so that...
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine on that one.
Okay, that does it, doesn't it?
It does, except for...
I believe, Mike, are you taking the second on City Org? Yeah.
There is still a couple of EDC committees, and I know that for the East Kern EDC, I thought Mayor Breeden did it before, and Mr. Bill Ferris of Planning Commission did the Kern EDC, so I don't know if you want to still leave Bill on the one, and...
So Mr. Ferris Jr., correct?
Yes, correct.
Has served on that previously?
Mm-hmm.
And if that's, if it's very normal for the Chair of the, or for the Mayor too, then I'd be happy to. And I'll dispense on, I don't know the exact expectation.
Yes, ma'am.
One, the Kern EDC is an important one by the mayor. IWV EDC is not served by City Council, it is served by someone in the Congress here because they did some supplemental oversight.
Oversight.
And so it is served in a...
So Mr. Ferris served the Kern EDC as the appointee of the mayor, and you served as the IWV EDC as a private citizen, which I have an active relationship with the IWV EDC, if there's somebody else that, you actually might even have a better relationship with them than I do, in many ways. I'm not, I don't mean that any negative.
I can, yeah, true.
I mean, I mean, I'm more than happy to do it, but you might have an even better relationship, honestly, you know the...
Goes along with Economic Development, so...
Yeah.
So just to clarify, it was IWV EDC that's going to be Solomon?
Correct.
And then the East Kern EDC will be Mr. Bill Ferris Jr.?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, backwards. No, EDC is appointed by the mayor for Bill Ferris. East Kern EDC is appointed by the mayor. And, and recently, Melissa has been serving as our representative on that.
Okay, so there's two, there's Kern EDC and, okay, and was IWV EDC, EDC wasn't, isn't any, isn't an appointment on this?
It is not on here, that's right.
Okay, so this is the East Kern EDC.
Which would be Solomon.
Okay, are you so comfortable with that? It's not the IWV EDC, this is the East Kern EDC. So that would be, I apologize for my not familiar for what Kern EDC, I'm going to guess that's Mojave.
Kern EDC is all of us on this side.
Yeah, so I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be Cal City, Mojave.
Yeah, it includes Tatchby, Cal City, Mojave, Palmdale, Lancaster.
Rosemond.
Rosemond.
Okay. I have no problem then serving on that if you, if you're more comfortable with that, or if you'd like it.
When do they meet? I mean, right now it's what?
Right, honestly, I don't know, do you know when?
The second Thursday of every other month, second Thursday of every other month.
And they meet, I assume, at somewhere in Mojave or something like that?
They have video waiting.
Prior to that, it was Mojave.
I'm going to guess it's Mojave is, is a central place, which is...
Well, Springfield, San Francisco, and then...
And Jaffe. And Mojave Spaceport.
Yeah, Mojave Spaceport. With four kids, I need every reason possible to go to Costco, so.
Don't say that.
Okay, so we're talking about East Kern EDC and Solomon or Bruin, who wants to do it?
I'm more than happy to, if you would like it, I understand.
Sure, go take it.
Okay, looks like it's me. Okay.
And RACBB stays with Melissa, right?
Melissa, yes, she's going to be still attending that. I think we're pretty good right now. The Navy Community Council is the mayor plus one council member, so we need that, I'm sorry, we had one more. So Mr. Bruins are automatically seated, and then we need one more if possible. Did they serve as an alternate, or did they go also?
As an alternate.
And this is for what?
We don't need...
Again.
Navy Community Council.
Navy Community Council.
I can, yeah.
Solomon, you want to do the alternate?
Everybody is okay.
Very good?
Yep.
Okay, I think we're good. I might need, once I clean this up and get everybody on there, we might need to bring it back one more time to fill some of your Personnel Commissions or the Measure V appointment at once, so it will be on the next meeting with a cleaned up chart, so you guys can see where we're at.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I look forward to working with each of you guys on those, because I think they're going to be kind of fun. I learned that you can't talk during the meetings after today either. Unless you're on the meeting. Unless you're on the meeting. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve a maintenance services agreement with Econolite and authorize the city manager Ron Strand to sign the agreement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll be taking this tonight. Mr. Culp is unavailable this evening. What this is before you is a one-year traffic signal maintenance contract with Econolite. It's a one-year contract with five potential one-year extensions at the discretion of both the city and Econolite. We currently have 14 signals, light signals within the city of Ridgecrest. It's more cost-effective to outsource this maintenance, because when we don't have the staff that's trained or the equipment to maintain these signals. We have been using Econolite since 2004, they have been very reliable according to staff. Since 2004, the only increases we've had in the cost of the contract has been cost of living increases. The contract covers routine maintenance for 27,000 a year, as well as standard maintenance, repairs and a time material cost, and we still have one matter that they're looking at, maybe hiring them to take care of for us, is the synchronization of our lights on Child Lake Boulevard that were installed a couple of years ago through a grant. Right now we have 50,000 that's budgeted for that endeavor, the contract, the base contract's 27,000. If, in fact, the synchronization is greater than what we've budgeted, we'll bring it back to council for review, if not, then part of the agreement, we will enter the agreement, move along with it. So I do believe this is a, this is a benefit to the city to maintain our Econolite in this service for the city, so I'm recommending this for approval this evening, authorizing myself to enter the agreement, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. So order, just to make sure I understand, I know that there's an opportunity for public comment and for council comment. Council comments typically would run first before public comment. Okay. Are there any council comments? Hearing none, are there any public comments? We have. Caller, please say your name.
Yes, Richard Wagner, 40 H. Alp Lincoln. I'd just like to say that I'd like to see this go out for competitive bid rather than sole source. I know years ago when we had the trash hauler, we didn't want to go for competitive bid, and after all was said and done, we found a much better deal with Waste Management, so I'd just like to see it go out for bid. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other callers? No other callers? Do I have a motion for approval? Is there any other, any other, I don't know the...
Is there a reason we don't go out for competitive bid?
Yeah, we went out to bid in 2004, they were the only, only firm that, that bid on it, and staff's recommendation is, is that at the time, we do believe this is a very reasonable cost, that what we're doing this for, we have a relationship with them, they do a very good job. Yes, we could put it out, but we anticipate the cost would either be greater, or it would be difficult to find somebody who's going to come up here for only 14 signals. It is a very limited, small contract.
It is a small contract.
Yeah, it's a small contract. So I'm basing that, based upon what staff's recommendation is, and also, I do know that when we do have problems, they are very responsive, they do respond from out of town. I do know that there are no vendors within our community or nearby that could service us, so there's no, no locals that we're cutting out by not opening up to bid, so really all we're looking for is more out-of-town vendors to participate. So we could, you know, next time, put it out to bid, that's why, one of the reasons why I think we had it for five one-year options. So if we feel that there's, there's a reason to cut this off and go with somebody else, we can. I'll move approval then.
Okay. I have a motion for approval, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, roll call vote?
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve a land lease agreement between the City of Ridgecrest and Environmental Chemical Corporation for 38, approximately 38 acres of vacant land in San Bernardino County adjacent to the city limits, along San Bernardino Boulevard and a sewer easement. City Manager Strand.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, what I have before you tonight is a lease agreement for 38 acres of vacant land in San Bernardino County with ECC. The purpose of this lease agreement, as you know, back last year in 2019, we had some significant quakes, it caused about $3 billion worth of damage on the base. As part of the repairs of that, the base has chosen to establish work camps for the up to 1,500 workers that are going to be here over the next four to five years to repair the installation. One of the reasons why the base went the direction of the worker camp is we do have a limited number of hotel rooms, they felt that if, that if they didn't do the worker They felt that if, that if they didn't do the worker camp, that the hotels would be overused and full, and it would affect their current mission over the next four to five years of the testing evaluation, where we do see a significant number of contractors and DOD and military employees coming to town for the testing events. Also, I do believe it's much cheaper for the Navy to have the worker camps than it is to pay the per diem for the hotels. So, they have chosen a section of land east of Ridgecrest, just a little bit east of San Bernardino County Boulevard, on the Navy land. ECC is looking at leasing 38 of our acres of land in San Bernardino adjacent to this for a couple of primary reasons. One, for an access road. Two, to be able to park some equipment. And three, to be able to have access to our wastewater system. Also, in this easement is access on some, on a city easement to one of our manholes on Church Street. So the terms of the agreement is four years with two six-month extensions, annual lease of about 214,000 a year, with the cost of, the sewage rate would be $4.30 per 100 cubic foot, which would be a designation of hotel with dining facilities. We believe this would bring in approximately an additional 30,000 to 120,000 a year, depend upon the volumetric of sewage that comes to the plant. And that really just depends on the number of people living at the camp, as well as the number of days that they stay at the camp. They don't anticipate they're gonna be there seven days a week. They believe that most of the workers will be heading home on the weekend. One of the other things that ECC will be contractually obligated to do is to repair 2,250 linear feet of an existing 10-inch sewer pipe that belongs to the city. They'd have to reline it. That sewer pipe currently serves the animal shelter. It is in poor condition. There's infiltration, so part of this is their agreement to fix that line. So what I have before you tonight is requesting your approval to enter this easement agreement with ECC and to allow them to take possession of the land effective January 1st of 2021. They do believe that they have a very aggressive schedule. They believe that they will have the first 400 units in place and ready for housing by February 1st. So it's a pretty aggressive schedule.
Very aggressive schedule. Okay, thank you.
Now, the original packet had this whole square marked.
I have a presentation for you guys.
Oh, let's see the presentation. I assumed it was the rectangular piece was the sewer easement.
One more, Gary. Well, originally, this land was purchased by the city for a future wastewater treatment facility. If we had to put it on the city site, this land was going to be utilized for evaporative and settling ponds. But since we came to an agreement with the Navy and came to terms on the easement new service agreement, this land is not necessary for the new wastewater treatment facility plan. Next slide, Gary.
Yeah, see the...
Yeah, the red square is the, is the 38 acres.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Right.
The amended agenda doesn't have a red square. It's just...
Oh, sorry about that.
So I went out and looked at the site. They have a security guard on it. I just told him who I was, and he let me in there. So the reason, they're just gonna use our property, well, first of all, they got a water line running through there right now.
Right. If you see the, yeah, the rectangular box that goes from left to right, that's the actual easement for...
For the road and the sewer line.
Right, correct.
And then the rest of this, so the reason they're putting the actual man camp is because that back property is Navy property.
Correct, yeah.
So they didn't wanna put it on our property, but they wanted to use our property for storage and to get back to that property.
Yes, they had to have, they had to lease our property to be able to have access to our sewer, as well as access to power and water.
They've done a lot of work out there already, by the way.
Right, they're fairly aggressive. Now, one of the things that, you know, one of the other reasons why we're agreeing to this is without them having access to our sewer system, it would potentially cost the Navy about an extra $6 million a year for sewer service out there. It'd be very expensive. So, it being partners with the Navy and understanding that, you know, the rebuild of that base is our lifeblood for the next 50 years. Getting that built is important to the city. So, that, the camp out there does not really gonna affect any resources of the city. We're not gonna have to respond for public safety. So really, that'll be the responsibility of China Lake Police Department and Fire Department to respond at that location for any calls for service.
I heard, and I'm not sure if I heard everything right, but I know Peggy's had talked with the, I guess with the Navy. So, if we have COVID still going, they're gonna kinda put a bubble around this thing? Or are these people gonna still be able to buy groceries and food stuff, something like that, in town, fast food?
The camp is not going to be fenced, and I would assume that by the time you get a significant number of people there, we're gonna have a vaccine. And I would assume the vaccine's going to enable that endeavor to move a little bit freer forward.
I would think that for essential needs, you know, that they would be able to, you know...
They're definitely an essential workforce.
Right, and for food, you know, gas, medical, you know, what I would say is probably deemed the essential needs currently, that they'd probably still be able to access those.
I do know that for the 400-person portion of that camp, they're gonna have a cafeteria, and the rest of it, they'll have little kitchenettes and their living quarters.
Gary, I'd like to report real quick. I just got a note from someone that said that from the public. It's white.
Hey, Gary, go to the next slide. We kinda switch back and forth. Sometimes I like a black background with white, and then try to make it wherever it looks best. This kinda represents what we're looking at a little bit more.
I just don't have access to the computer on my report, so I can't access the computer like I normally do. So right now, they're trying to speak to the screen, and it's all white.
It's all white, okay. Well, it's in the staff report, and they can find it online. So as you can see, Church Street, you can see San Bernardino Boulevard, and you can see more of a kind of a blown-out section there, exactly where the camp's at.
So how did we arrive at this monthly lease agreement? That's pretty nice.
It was a negotiated amount.
Pretty nice, okay. I understand the sewer system thing, but I just was curious about the...
From the income, it's just the details. Couple of questions. Are they going to pave Church?
No.
No. So Church will remain a dirt road all the way to their project site?
Correct. Where they're going to place gravel is in San Bernardino County, so that would not be a city of Ridgecrest maintained road.
That road is going to be gravelled.
Yeah, it's just general question.
Actually, I think it's basically decomposed granite is what's gonna be put down. Right now, the first little section of it's rock, and then it turns to dirt, which they've been keeping moist enough that there's no dust problems there. But the guy out there told me, actually, the site manager saw me come in, so he went out and talked to the guard, then he came back, talked to me. And he said that the Navy is very concerned about dust control, and they would be putting down crushed rock, which is basically decomposed granite.
Decomposed granite.
So...
The other one is, I understand it may not be our obligation, but we encouraged or asked for ECC to notify the homeowners around the camp area of the development and what the plan is for that area.
There's not very many people very close.
It looks like there's maybe, I mean, I'm looking at, that's why I looked at the satellite, you got...
Do you believe there's maybe, there's maybe one or two occupied homes? And I'll be frankly, that'd probably be a requirement that the Navy would place on ECC, because it is actually their...
Yeah, I just asked if we've asked. Not so much, not so much a mandate, but have we said, hey, will you please have the common courtesy, these people may not be... They may not be defined as part of city residents, but they are defining themselves as city residents. Any other comments? Obviously, the income is fantastic for barren land, and it supports the mission of getting the construction moving forward, so...
I have one question. Who pays for the repairs of the 2,250 feet?
That is ECC. They...
They'll be paying.
Yes, they're responsible to repair the line. And at the end of the project, they are to remove the temporary line on our city property and then secure that line. So, as part of this, we're also gonna get, you know, 2,200 feet of our sewer line repaired by them.
I think this is a win-win.
Okay, no other council comments? Do I have any public comments? I heard the phone ringing too. I just can't, with the white, with the white background, I can't see.
I'll use, I'll use black next time.
No, no, I'm meaning the white reflecting on there. I can't see if there's hands waving at all.
He's not giving...
Okay. Hearing no public comment?
Wait, wait.
I think you got one.
Oh. Is there one on there? Okay. Caller, please say your name.
He hasn't switched him over yet.
Oh, yeah, like I said, I can't, I mean, it looks, that's green, I can tell that. Caller, please say your name.
Hi, this is Skip Gorman. I live here on Bowman Road within the city of Ridgecrest. Are you picking me up okay? Are you hearing me?
Yes, we are, sir.
I can barely hear you, but I'll filter forward. My home is a good Tiger Woods Three Wood from the property that you guys are talking about. And I wanted to mention about the condition of Bowman Road. That is, it runs from Walmart directly east past my house, and comes to a screeching dirt road stop at County Line Road. And I expect, once the man camp that we can practically see from my front porch is fully staffed, the traffic along Bowman Road, which is deteriorating something fierce, will pick up. It's bound to. I wanted to flag the condition of Bowman Road. It's within the city of Ridgecrest, and it needs to be repaired. I've asked this before, and most people look at each other over there at City Hall and shrug and grin and say, yeah, but nobody goes up and down Bowman Road. I expect that it'll become a lot of somebody soon. And I'd like to know that you folks understand the difficulty and maybe willing to lean forward soon and do something about it. That's my, my comment, which I cast in form of a request, okay?
Thank you, sir. We will get back to you with some information on where that is in the paving schedule.
I thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Hearing none? Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
I move approval.
Second. Roll call vote?
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Hayman?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratna?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and provide guidance to the city's representative on the board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority.
All right, that was me. So, what I'm gonna do is just kinda give you a brief overview of last month's meeting. And so, I'll just kinda start off the agenda. Item seven was meter compliance update and staff recommendations on changes to the policy and amendment of ordinance 01-20 with first read ordinance 04-20. So, we discussed that and actions were taken. Next on the item, or next item on the agenda was board consideration and approval of funding agreement between Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority and the Indian Wells Valley Water District for Brackish Water Study. That was discussed and approved, and so that they could continue to pursue the final stages of the Brackish Water Study, followed by a report on the Brackish Water. Next item was the board consideration amending ordinance number 02-18, establishing groundwater extraction fees and the rules, regulations, and procedures for their imposition, and authorize staff to set the public hearing for December 17th, 2020. That's the raising of the $30 extraction fee to 105, and so that will be on the agenda tomorrow. Discussion and... Yeah, so, nevermind, it'll be on the, or on the agenda tomorrow. Next, item 10 was board consideration and approval of option agreement for the purchase of recycled water from the city of Ridgecrest. As the council had previously approved, approved the option, the board discussed it and approved it. Item 11 was board consideration and approval of resolution 08-20, establishing a recycled water program. That too was discussed and approved by the board. Item 12 was board consideration and discussion of a potential following valuation and potential transfer market in the transient pool. And so, discussion was trying to determine the value of the acre foot of water for the following program. And $200 was a, $200 to $300 was a price range that was discussed. Item 13 was board consideration and approval of resolution 09-20, submitting an application for new Prop 68 grant funding. And that was exactly that, for the Prop 68. Item 14 was board discussion on vision plan. We did not discuss much on that. And so, that was pretty much the agenda for last month's meeting. So I'm open to any, any questions, if anybody has any...
Now, the one item you mentioned on there that's up for public hearing, that's the, is that the fee that starts in January?
No, that would be the replenishment fee. This is, deals with the extraction fee that was at $30 and is being tentatively raised to $105 to offset the, I'm not looking at my notes here, but approximately like a 1.5 million deficit gap in the budget. And so...
Who pays that?
All the pumpers that are currently, the non-dominant pumpers.
That's a heck of a, almost four times?
Yes.
Yeah, one of the things is that when they set the pumping fee at $30 an acre foot, they didn't understand that 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 would cause some folks to not pump as much. So the actual amount of pumping was far less than what we'd anticipated.
And we had a wetter, wetter, and there were some, yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't amount, there is a, like, for your water district bill, it's not a large sum. It's an increase, but it is not a large sum of money.
Also, I got, and I assume every other council member did too, several letters from supporters of Trona on postponing that fee that starts in, does that start in January?
Yes.
And that's still a substantial amount for Trona, right?
Yeah, correct.
Mr. Mayor, can I offer some clarification on the extraction fee?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, what's the, so the extraction fee was previously raised earlier this year, as Mr. Hayman indicated. But what's on the agenda for tomorrow is not an effort to raise the fee further. The number of the fees is the same. The reason they're doing it, it's kind of a do-over, is that they're receiving some comments about the support for the fee when it was adopted earlier this year. So they're essentially doing it again with additional information, sort of better spelled out, to support the fee. So this isn't, this doesn't represent a new fee or an increased fee.
Essentially, a reassessment of a fee.
Correct.
Has there been any talk about postponing the fee that the Tronists have to start paying?
It's not, it's not on the agenda currently.
Any other council comments? I have none at this time. Kyle?
No, no, I'm good. I've read over the agenda packet, and, you know, usually, I feel bad, because a lot of these turn into just us grilling Councilman Hayman as if he was a member of staff. I guess I have maybe one thing, and that is, I think it's item number 11, the board consideration for possible approval of variance requests for so-and-so forth, buying Mojave potatoes, et cetera. Maybe Ron, you could clarify that one. I don't know if you have it in front of you. What is being discussed there, the variance request?
Well, I think the variance request, from what I recall, is in an effort to save some of the pumpers' money in the sense that there'll be variances in the type meters that the groundwater authority will accept. So, you know, because each one of the major pumpers has to have a way of metering their water usage. And so, the variance allows either an alternate methodology to, as long as we get the information, can understand how much you're pumping, there's the ability to be able to use the common sense and not require you to spend $20,000 on a meter that your current meter will do just as fine. So that's the reason for those variances, is just working with the pumpers to be able to try and and help them save a little bit of money in responding or complying with... and help them save a little bit of money in, in responding or, or complying with, uh, the pumping fee.
And so, I could add to that too, on, um, this is for tomorrow's agenda that he's referring to. And so, I think Mojave, uh, Pistachios variance is, uh, it's also looking at using a different meter than what is, um, currently being listed. And so, there'll be discussion as to, you know, how to address that, but, uh, so it's actually a different meter. So, the variance that some are, you know, using alternate, um, ways of measuring the power, um, pumping, you know, whether it's, you know, the, uh, monitoring the electrical output, um, do that, these electrical meters, or, but in Mojave Pistachios' case, I think it's actually using a different meter.
And, okay, and, um, I guess, now that you guys got me talking, maybe one or two more things. I, I believe it was in October, there was an exploratory well being tested, believe in the El Paso. What was the, what came out of that?
I can, I can touch base on that, so, um, let's see, let me find if I brought some notes. Or, so, yeah, so there, there's a, an item in the agenda tomorrow, um, I believe it's, is it TS, TSS? Um, um, so, basically, uh, that is geared toward the El Paso well. Um, currently there, that's in progress, and so, the goal is to drill out to fifteen hundred, uh, down to fifteen hundred feet, do sediment samplings, and install three Piazol meters at, uh, three twenty-eight, twenty, and thirteen twenty feet depths. And so, that is all, uh, continues to be in progress, so, and I will, uh, as I said in the past, um, keep everybody abreast of, you know, how that progress is going with that well, and any, any input. I'm not sure what they, I, I believe they estimated, if I remember right, like, sometime in the fall to have-
No, they're, uh, they're gonna drill the well in February.
Right, but the information, uh, can, you know, like conclusive evidence, uh, and information, I think, that, you know, sometime later in the summer or fall. But, um, yeah, so it, it's, it's in progress, so that's good news.
Okay, yeah, that's, I, you know, this isn't on the GA, I just wonder, um, I know at least a little bit about where you're drilling wells and sampling, I just wonder why that puts a long lead time, but I guess that's, that's the process. Um, and so, Ron and, and Hayman, uh, Doc Hayman, when, when is that, the switch over where you are the chair, Doc, and, uh, you, Ron, are then the, the manager?
Yeah, the, the chair goes to Mr. Hayman in January, and tomorrow, they'll, they'll be making a decision what they do with the general manager, whether or not, uh, the city takes over, or myself takes over as general manager, or they hire a independent firm.
Are you ready for that, Doc Hayman?
Yes. That's a confident yes.
Well, that was a pretty confident yes, all right, well, we're gonna lean on you then.
Hence why the water conversation was very simple tonight.
Yeah, there was not an overabundance of takers.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay? Oh, uh, yeah, any public comment? Is that a public comment right now?
Public comment on this item, eight twenty-five Sonia is my address, Peggy Breeden. I would like to ask the GSA and the city and all the entities involved in that, there are alternates who sit and are expected to be fully informed of everything that happens with the GSA in case one of the, the, um, appointed person or elected person is unable to serve, the alternate will be able to attend those meetings and be up to date. Because the alternates are not allowed to go into closed session, there is no way you can learn everything that happens in closed session. It is virtually impossible to do that. I would like the GSA, the attorneys, and all the people involved to find a way to allow the alternates to attend the closed session meeting, saying nothing, asking no questions, learning what's happening to those people who are appointed and staffed. It is impossible to try to be as up to date and accurate. If something happened to Scott, Mike will go in there and not be able to know most of what has happened in the past, but clearly, not even understanding where the other board members are coming from. I understand the legal reasons, I can appreciate them, but consider them as staff who go in. They are, they answer questions and speak when addressed, but it is important that the alternate have the same knowledge. And Keith, I know there's legal reasons why you've all said that can't be done. I want it to be looked at again and defined that it is impossible for the alternate to not go in and attend closed session meetings. Thank you.
Uh, can I, can I respond to that?
Yeah, I'll open up the council comments one more time after any, after any public comments. Uh, oh, it's Keith, go ahead, Keith, sorry.
You know, I think that, uh, there's been a positive change in the Brown Act rules regarding that topic. So, I'm, uh, I, I will, uh, take it, take it upon myself to take a look at that, um, and, and consult with, uh, Phil Hall about it.
Okay, you can't see on camera, but Peggy's dancing. Okay, do I have any other public comment? Can't see any hands waving.
He's blinking.
Oh, he's gonna blink at me, I like that. Okay, we're gonna learn this, okay. More is gonna, double blinks, that, that works. Hearing no other public comment, any other, any other council comments? No, we'll go on to item number thirteen, a resolution of the successor agency to the Ridgecrest Redevelopment Agency, approving an implementation agreement between the successor agency and Global Investment Enterprise Ridgecrest, a limited liability company.
Yes, I have this one, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. What I have before you is an implementation agreement between the successor agency and Global Investment Enterprise Ridgecrest. Uh, as you know, in, uh, January of this year, uh, the city and the Tempe Shoshone Tribe entered into a settlement agreement resolving a dispute regarding the development of a, uh, Indian-style casino on twenty-six point four eight acres of successor agency land in the city. As part of that agreement, uh, the city entered into a land sale agreement for that land on February third with Global Investment Enterprises Group. Um, the, with the outside purchase date, uh, February second of twenty twenty-one. Uh, unfortunately, uh, within a month of that agreement being entered into, COVID nineteen hit the country and the world, uh, shut down the economy, and specifically shut down, uh, the casino industry, uh, since it is, uh, non-essential business. Uh, the casino industry is the primary financing method for Indian casinos. So, it's, it's fairly apparent that, um, the tribe and, and the developer weren't able to secure financing due to COVID nineteen. Uh, they have since, uh, requested a one-year extension until February second of twenty twenty-two to, uh, close on the land deal. Um, the city could have gone out as far as December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, but I do feel that, uh, the one-year extension is appropriate. Uh, with the vaccine, uh, now, uh, becoming available this week, um, there's a belief that it will be widely available, uh, to the community and to the country sometime either late spring, early summer. So, this should give, uh, the developers sufficient time to find the financing, to purchase land, take it into trust, and build, uh, the casino if they can. Um, as part of the agreement, uh, the tribe, or actually the developer, has agreed, uh, to additional consideration payments, um, totaling, uh, fifty-six thousand dollars over the next year. Uh, the, the fifth independent consideration will be due two days after the agreement is approved, if approved by council. Uh, another, uh, independent consideration will be due of twenty-seven thousand on or before February second, twenty twenty-one. Then if necessary, uh, another twenty-eight thousand dollars, uh, in an independent consideration payment will be due on or before August, uh, second, twenty twenty-one. That would, uh, total the amount to, I believe, um, if they went out as far as August, uh, August second of twenty twenty-one, uh, the developer would, would have had deposited, uh, approximately two hundred and twenty-three thousand in consideration funding. Uh, if they do not purchase the land by, uh, twenty twenty-two, that, uh, funding would then go, uh, back to the successor agency. Uh, half would go to our, uh, partner, China Lake Properties, and the other half would go to, um, the tax and entities, be split, uh, according to a, a formula as developed by, uh, the state. So, what I'm requesting tonight is, uh, authorization of the city council to, uh, authorize, uh, myself to enter into, uh, this agreement with, uh, the Tempe Shoshone Tribe, and specifically, uh, Global Investment Enterprise of Ridgecrest, uh, extending, uh, the land sale agreement to February second of twenty twenty-two. And I'm available for any questions.
Yeah, um, this, this money, the payments, now that comes to the successor agency, does not go into escrow, is that correct?
No, it does not. All, all the, all the current consideration money is currently in our trust account for the business park.
Other council comments?
Um, I do have a comment. I mean, from the beginning, I had two concerns about this project. One is the viability, the other one is the security of the base. The location is not, it does not, uh, in my opinion, as a banker, I look at the viability of a project before I give a loan. So, this project does not, it, it's not going to make money for the city as we are expecting. So, and also, we are putting this next to the base, and base is rebuilding, and we are going to have a world-class base, and this is going to be a security concern for that base. So, we need to think about those things. I beg to defer the other opinions, but those are my concerns, and for that reason, I might not be comfortable voting for the extension of this escrow.
Any other public, uh, council comments?
But, yeah, I'd like to, um, add on, well, add on to that comment. So, I, I recognize Solomon's point, um, all, all valid points, and, and points I, I argued, um, you know, a year ago. I think the, the only thing that is having me, um, you know, providing encouragement for this extension is simply because, you know, our city manager has done a great amount of work to show good faith between the city and, and the tribe. And I don't, I'm not always positive that the tribe felt that was the case in the past. If it's been entered into the agreement, we should show good faith, but I think at the end of this year, um, we, we've, we've fulfilled that good faith. And we need to look at the, I, I believe the casino needs to be somewhere different. I don't believe it needs to be where it is. And I, I'm gonna keep saying that, and I'm going to say this again out loud, like I said, anywhere else, anybody who will hear me. It needs to be put to a vote, um, but I know that's not happening now, we're talking about this extension. Sorry, I know that this is breaking up quite a bit.
That's okay, you're doing great, Kyle. Just be impatient with it. Doc, do you hear that?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to be patient.
So, uh, yes, I'd just like-
So, I recognize Solomon's point, I agree with him. But in this one particular case, I'm going to, because of the work that our city manager's done, try and repair the relationship between the tribe and the city. Is the, uh, is probably the sole reason I'm encouraging, uh, this extension.
Okay, thank you, Kyle.
I, I just wanna say that, you know, I, I respect and can appreciate the contention that were voiced by the other council members, but, um, those were issues that were part of the prior discussions and, um, and decisions made, and, uh, things were negotiated, and settlements were made. And today's issue is strictly about, um, extending a timeframe for them to, to look at the financing and to be able to attain financing. Um, with the heavy emphasis, uh, of this extension being based on what COVID nineteen has done to this, uh, to the United States, to this state, to our city, to, uh, the world. And, uh, I think this is a, a very fair and appropriate, um, measure to take. Um, I don't think anybody wants to see a lasting, long-term, um, carryout of this. Um, a year is a, is a pretty long time to, um, for them to be able to look at getting the financing. So, I, I'm in approval of this, I, I think it's a, a very fair, the, the, this casino issue's been a long battle or a long-term i- issue, but if you look at the actual timeframe that they've had from a true and fair settlement agreement by both parties, um, it's been one year with the mix of COVID in there. So, I think this is a very fair and appropriate, uh, measure to take at this time.
I, I would just like to say I agree with Scott Hayman.
Yeah, I, I also agree with, with, uh, Doc, and, and right now, I think that the key element to understand here is that the, uh, good faith of the, of the, uh, city and of the city council is at the heart of this issue, which is, we started this, we reached this negotiation last, uh, or earlier this February, I believe it was, um, that put into motion their first opportunity to really begin to seek out financing prior to the back and forth that's been occurring in the four years before then. And, I mean, COVID started March fourteenth, I think that's generally is that accepted date of, uh, D-Day. Um, so, they had really three day, three, three weeks or three, four weeks to acquire financing, and, and still to this day, we're dealing with COVID. And I think that's the important point here, is that the, the city is acting in good faith with the tribe and with the developer and saying, "We understand that this is an exigent circumstance, which was not part of, uh, your abilities to control or our abilities to control, and therefore, we continue to support the time extension." But I do wanna, uh, echo what I think there is a general concern, um, which is that we don't want to be in the habit of doing a kicking the can down the road here. Um, the council, previous councils made a decision. We stand by that decision as a council because of, that's what's happened. We stand by the city's agreement, and we stand by the, uh, good faith to provide sufficient time for the financing to be acquired, but we don't really wanna be back here in, uh, February of twenty twenty-two uh, talking about kicking it further. I think that's the, uh, a, a good consensus, uh, opinion of where we're at. Um, and, uh, with that, I would call for a, um, uh, any other council comments and any public comments?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, this is Kyle Blades, and sorry about the speaker, I'll try to be patient. I'm, I'm gonna report back that this, this isn't, this issue needs to be discussed thoroughly. We can't just blow over the top of it, like, "Well, it's just an extension," it's not. The public needs to also see that this is an opportunity, if the city council wishes, to restart doing this again. We're probably, 'cause I can hear the general consensus, not gonna do that. And I'm saying that I agree with that, but only because we need to show good faith as a city, as a city council. Not because we're going to just accept that there were mistakes made in the past, and we're just gonna keep carrying mistakes forward. I don't think that should ever be how we do things. There were a lot of mistakes made in the past, and we're lucky that we had a city manager clean everything up. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, we'll now open up for public comment. Are we there? Okay, callers, say your name.
Nigel White.
George Golds, oh, go ahead, Nigel.
I'm here.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. White.
Can you hear me?
We can, sir.
Uh, uh, Nigel White. And, 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 uh, George Golson's, uh, on tour.
Okay, please proceed, sir.
Thank you. Well, good e- good evening, yes, I, uh, well, good evening, city council, thank you for the chance.
Mute your TV, it might help a little bit, that's, that's, that's probably where you're getting the, the delay from.
That's probably where you're getting the delay from.
Yeah.
City council, can you hear me?
I can, I can, George, it's faint, but we can hear you.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to, one, of course, congratulate the new members to the city council that were elected. I think you guys will carry on in the traditions of the previous council. I'm very happy to hear.
Hey Nigel, you need to turn your TV or your YouTube off. Then we can hear you, you won't have that feedback.
A word, good faith on agreements that have previously been passed by city council as representatives of the residents of Ridgecrest. You guys just hit it on the head a few minutes ago when you said, you know, "We had three weeks in which to raise financing, which for a large amount of many, many millions is not easy to do at the best of times." And of course, when COVID hit, the capital markets basically shut down. The commercial lending markets is the two gentlemen on city council from banks are well aware of. And everything sort of froze. Every casino, for the first time in living history in the United States, shut down. So it really has hamstrung the tribe and myself and our company, you know, in raising the needed capital to get this land closed. So we decided to use good business sense and approached Mr. Ron Strand and said, "Mr. Strand, you know, it makes good business sense to apply now for a one-year extension. I'm hoping we won't need it, with the vaccine being officially out on the streets and in people's hands. I believe that in the first quarter of next year, I think we'll be well on the way to having our financing done. But the land extension, which we're asking for, is really just a strategic move, just to make sure that we don't get ourselves into a jackpot. And of course, we're respectful of city council's time, and certainly would not want to approach city council on January the 25th and ask for an extension, you know, for a land option which expires on February the 2nd of next year. Any questions at all? And sorry, one last thing, believe me, we have approached many, many people who have funded many, many casinos, both in the Native American environment and in the commercial arena. And until this vaccine kicks into gear, or there's a better economic climate out there, or there's a better horizon as to the way the country is going, it's difficult to raise money, if not impossible. But we will get there. We will deliver what we promised. We will be good neighbors, we'll be good citizens, and we got to build a nice casino that you can feel comfortable with, that you can go in there, you can gamble, or you can have drinks, or you can have a nice dinner, and not gamble. Thank you, city council.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Yes, this is George Golson, and-
I can hear George barely.
He can hear me barely. I have my phone, my hands are all the way up. How about, how about now?
Much better, much better, George.
Okay, yeah, you know, technology, you know, we really didn't depend on technology until we had the COVID. Now we depend on it, and we find all these bugs. But first off, congratulations to everybody on the city council, and we're going to miss the people that are leaving. But it's progression, and we're looking forward to moving on to the future. And, you know, Indian country's been hit hard, like everybody in, you know, in the country's been, well, on the planet's been hit by the pandemic. And we're going to strive to move forward and see what we can accomplish in the next year. And I appreciate you, you're taking the time to take a look at this. And again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comment? Hearing none. We'll go and close public comment. Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
I'll move approval.
I have a motion by Mr. Mauer, a second, I don't see that, roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Heyman.
Aye.
Mr. Rajarothnum.
No.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
We have four ayes with one no for Mr. Rajarothnum. Motion does carry.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. With some of the members gone, let's go ahead. Anything from finance?
Yes, and I'm going to miss having Mayor Breeden next to me to help me on this. But I'll do my best to fill in. So the primary agenda item on the finance committee meeting that we just held was the employee compensation study that has been completed. And so we got a review from our fine staff and finance. And so what I'd like to do is just kind of give a brief overview, because I think this is probably something, this is such a big item that I'm sure that it's going to, you know, come before council as a, and I would hope, and it would come before us as a discussion item that we can all sit and talk and discuss and keep this in the forefront of what we as a city need to be doing as a, you know, a result of this, the findings of this. So briefly, the discussion items, there was survey results, salary projections, and continued discussion. Survey results, let me get to it here. They did a survey, basically. Question number one, top priority. So in question number one, the top priority was start increasing salaries based on the final compensation study. So salary increases were number one, and this, let me back up. This survey was given out to the employees. They had a really, I think, a pretty substantial turnout of the employees. I think it was more than, more than half, or close to 80% of them. But, so basically, in the first question, the number one concern on employees' minds was to start increasing salaries based on the final compensation study. Number two was cost of living increases, or the COLAs. And then number three was cafeteria. The next survey, question number two, and this is considered second priority, was the number one vote receiver was increased cafeteria to decrease out-of-pocket insurance costs. Number two was cost of living increases. And so, and then followed by salaries based on the final compensation study. So basically, what it's saying is that in the, the primary concern with employees is, you know, salary increases. And COLA, which was, if you look at the two questions, COLA was really high on both of them. So I think that's a major concern of the employees. And so as you move through the overview here, they, well, I'll go into question number three. So question number three, the number one concern was, with 26 votes, was adding steps to the current salary schedule. So again, that puts it back to salaries being a major, primary concern of the employees. So a brief summary of the survey results were, question results, top priority, start increasing salaries based on study. Second is increased cafeteria, and third is adding steps to the current schedules. So that's the, that's the input back from the employees. So then there was some various projections made with, how do we start? And where would we start? 1% COLA increases, baseline salary increases. And we looked at, you know, how that would affect the budget and how much it would increase it by. And so, starting with baseline salaries, moving to 1%, and we looked at 3% cost increase, 5%, or 3% cost of living increases, COLA. So we looked at 1%, 3%, and 5%. And then we did some, or they, they did some combinations of adding a 1% COLA raise mixed with the salary increase. And we did it, they did it with 1%, 3%, 5%. And so basically, looked at these different combinations and kind of added what it would raise the budget to the city by. And so this is going to be looked at in more in-depth. I think it's one of the most important topics that the city is facing right now. We have, some of the employees are 15% below on their, on their salary levels. There's COLA raises that haven't been given in, I guess it's eight, nine years? 10 years, 10 years now? So we need to act on this, and of course, it all comes down to money and revenues coming in. So, you know, trying to put this all together. This study is going to be a great amount of information that will allow us to really look at where we stand currently, and will give us the baseline to be able to make, you know, decisions on where we can go. And then we'll have to look at our finances as to revenue and what we can start with. And we're taking all that into account with the employees. And so, and that's why I said earlier that I think that once they get a little further with the study, then I would foresee it coming back to council so that we could discuss this as a, as a council and the city to try to make determinations. And back when we had earlier discussions, the employees, one of the biggest comments that was coming back from them in their employee discussions and from the unions and their representatives was a plan, you know, having a plan. They don't care if, knowing that, you know, funds might be limited, but they want to see us take the bull by the horns here, acknowledge that we have an issue that needs to be corrected, and start to make a visionary plan on where, how, and how much can we start with. So I think that's kind of it in a nutshell. So I'll, you know, report back more of it later. But any questions I could try to answer, but I didn't want to carry it out, get too deep into it, or, you know, in a finance committee report.
I will say, as a private person listening in, it was very interesting. So, I mean, I think the, I think the staff is simply saying, more than anything else, is we've respected the fact that you've had this 10-year problem, but we want to hear a solution. Even if it's going to take a time to get to the solution, we want to hear what the solution is that you're trying to achieve. I think that's what the staff is probably screaming for more than anything else.
And it's a very positive thing. I think this is, it's a, it's a tough one. I mean, there's no doubt about this is going to be a, you know, kind of a tough, long thing. But I don't think it's something that we can, you know, touch base on it and then let it go. It's going to be something we need to stay, keep it in forefront, and keep assessing it, reassessing it, and correct it. Oh, yes, sorry, thank you, Mike. And so the other part of the meeting was the sales tax. Let me see if I got my notes here. So basically, sales tax is looking good. We're ahead, TOT is down a little bit, but that's, let's see here. So I had, thought I had written it down. But anyway, so in a nutshell, sales tax is doing good. Measure B, we're sitting well there. The TOT, I believe, was a little bit low. TOT is quite a bit low, and that has to do with the COVID and occupancy of the hotels, and we're expecting that to start to trickle up here as things start getting better with COVID, then so will, will travel occupancy and the TOT. The property taxes were showing a little low at the moment, but they're looking stable. But the, I believe it's December and April's numbers haven't been computed into the total. So property tax looked a little low, but Sharice assured us that that's looking pretty, pretty stable. So overall, I think we're pretty blessed as a city that we've maintained a pretty reasonably stable financial budget through this year of COVID. So overall, good news.
Yeah, I was going to only add one more thing that was definitely discussed in that meeting, which was, we definitely understand that TOT is going to be down. But TOT not being properly reported to the city and not properly allocated by all of the hoteliers is something that I know code enforcement was being discussed about.
And so, we'll just add to that, that an audit of TOT is-
Was underway, that's correct.
Is underway, yeah. And with that, then that will allow the city to be able to make sure everybody's on a clean, you know, even playing field with the TOT revenues that should be coming in.
That's correct. It wasn't, it was an audit.
It's an audit.
That's correct, I'm sorry.
Okay. And nothing else? Infrastructure?
Yes, because we couldn't meet on Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve. We've gone dark these two months. We were possibly going to have a meeting the first part of December. We didn't have anything agenda that was urgent, so we will just be having our regular meeting in January, which is the fourth Thursday of January.
With Thanksgiving and Christmas taking, you couldn't go New Year's Eve?
Figured I'd be out partying with you.
Yeah, I have four kids, I'm not going to be partying. I'll be trying to put in bed. Economic Development Committee, Kyle?
It was canceled.
Okay. Parks, Rec, Quality of Life, Dr. Heyman?
Did not meet.
Did not meet. I can tell the public that I know that we are still awaiting the report from Councilman Huntzacker, is that correct?
We've gotten back initial numbers, and we've sent them back for revision.
Okay.
I do believe that Nerissa Wagoner is going to be calling a special meeting of the Quality of Life to discuss a CPDG grant and some additional funding. She wants to get some input on a grant we're looking at to possibly fix and repair a couple of our softball fields. So I know that's coming.
But we are still working towards the pool grant.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The pool grants do in March. And so the numbers were sent back to Councilman Huntzacker. I think it's just a translation between maybe privately-owned pools and publicly-owned pools, and what costs are and what our staffing levels are going to be. So there was some information that was given back to them that should adjust those numbers to more of a realistic number.
And I think the important thing for the public to be aware of is that this, we're using this time. We're using the extra three months we were given to make sure that we have a great proposal together that really does assess some of the public concerns.
Okay. RACVB, I don't think there's any report. Other committees, boards, or commissions?
Yeah, current cog is dark this month, so we'll be meeting the third Thursday of January.
Anybody else? Hearing none. City manager report?
Yeah, I just want a quick item. I do believe that our, the system in here should be completed by middle of January. We're looking at some of the software being installed next month. And of course, we just asked everybody to be patient. We're going to have a great system when it's done. It's going to probably have a few bugs in it for just a little bit. So I would hope probably by the first meeting in February, we're going to have a very good system that will help the public participate in our meetings remotely. And I think that even after COVID passes, I still think that, you know, there's always good things that come out of bad. And I think we'll probably open up for more public comment in the future. So people, if they decide to stay at home, let's say you're out of town, instead of just not being able to attend because you couldn't physically show up, they'll have the ability to call in. So I think that that is going to be a significant addition to those who feel that their elected officials and the city is closed off. I think it'll allow us the ability to get more input, more feedback, which is always a good thing.
Okay, future agenda items?
I got one quick thing there.
Okay.
So this may not be an agenda item, but it could be kicked to maybe the Quality of Life Committee or Infrastructure, or over to you or Ron to figure that out. I have, in some time, received complaints about trash and median stuff that it's believed that it's up to the city to clean up. I, in the past, have talked to our Parks and Rec Director, and it usually falls down to not enough staff time to accomplish everything in a day. I understand they're stretched thin, but this is not a criticism, but as an item, it doesn't need to be discussed at one of the committees to figure out if it truly is, you know, an allocation of staff time, how we work it out. What are we going to do about it? It's one of the things that we need to, at least paying attention to it and discussing it.
Yeah, it could fit in either one or two committees, either Infrastructure or Quality of Life. I know that there are some parts that are managed by Public Works on the Assessment Districts, and I know that our Park and Rec staff are responsible- Districts, and I know that our Park and Rec staff are responsible for, uh, the median, so, let, let me get back with you on that, and I'll find a committee for that to go on, and we'll, we'll address it in January.
Thanks, Ron.
Any other agenda items? Hearing none. Mayor and Council comments? I think we'll start with Mr. Mauer.
Yes, thank you. I just want to, um, thank both Lindsay and Peggy for their service and for the privilege of being able to serve with them, Peggy, for six years, uh, you'll be missed, and, uh, hopefully you stay close friends like we have been, and, uh, it's sad to see what's going on in the community right now with the, with the uptick in, in positive cases. I just, I noticed that it seems like, um, I see less and less people out in public without their masks. Uh, there's been times when I've gone to the grocery store and seen several people without masks, I don't see anybody without masks anymore, and, um, so I just encourage people to keep vigilant, wash your hands, and, um, social distance, and we do stay at least five feet apart up here on the dais, so, and it's hard to talk through a mask. I wear my mask in, wear my mask out, and I wear ma, mask when I go in anywhere. You gotta try doing physical therapy with a mask on. Solomon?
Um, to what Mike said, I want to thank Peggy for her service, so, I know we'll be seeing, seeing you in all the meetings here, though we did not agree on some issues, we have been friends for a long time, so that's the beauty of friendship, so I appreciate that, and I want to appreciate Ron for his hard work and for, for your diligence in all the things, it's not, you, you try to keep, keep up with so many things going on and also keep everybody in the loop, so really appreciate that, so, hope we'll be having good relationship in the future, and we'll be doing good things for this community.
Kyle?
Yeah, I want to start off by saying I look forward to looking with, you know, working with everybody up there on that diet, you know, it's, it's been a pleasure so far, it really has, being appointed, being elected, uh, Doc Hayman, you've been a good double head, Mr. Mauer, um, you've got a lot of great knowledge, and it really has been helping me. Solomon, it was nice working with you on the commission, so I'm sure working on the, on the council is going to be equally as great. Um, I, I would like to say to Peggy, I always appreciated her, her decorum and her posture, that, that was a good model for, for us all to get, to get to, and then extend, um, you know, an appreciation to Councilwoman Stevens. She is probably one of the most dedicated people to this job that I have ever met. I've never met somebody more ambitious, never met somebody who digs down into the details and will not let it go, um, more than Lindsay, and I appreciated her constant honesty, and sometimes to her, you know, unwaveringness was maybe to her detriment, but it was always, uh, you always knew where Lindsay Stevens stood, and I, I appreciated it deeply, so I just wanted to send my thanks to all of them, and I look forward to the, the future.
Doc?
So, yeah, I'll just add, um, I think the word spoken tonight, um, to our, um, to our former mayor, Peggy Breeden, and, uh, Lindsay, Council, the words were all true, and, um, I have to say that, uh, it has been a great honor to, um, to have worked with you, Peggy, over these last two years. Your knowledge and your, your willingness to share your expertise and your, yourself and, and, uh, with others on this council and with the community, um, is unmatched. I think you're a fantastic, uh, person, I think you, um, are an outstanding, um, pillar for this city, and so, uh, I know you're not going anywhere, and I look forward to hearing from you in the future, so, but I thank you personally, and, um, wish you the best, so.
Thank you, sir. So, I guess I have a lot of things to say. First, whoa, this is going to be fun. Um, if you haven't figured out things about my personality, public, and the Council is I'm not your, your box thinker, I'm going to say things out of place, and, uh, this is a public apology in advance for the next two years. Um, I am so excited, uh, to be doing this, I'm so excited to be on this new journey, um, it's going to take every ounce of me to pull it off, and I love that. Um, we've spent a lot of years fighting as a, as a community, and I think that this is a time for us to celebrate with incredible optimism, everything that we have going for us. Um, this community is absolutely been blessed in COVID for multiple reasons. To consider that we had the earthquake last year, and that we secured our funding before COVID hit us, then we had our primary employer maintain employment, we are poised for incredible opportunities, and I speak to the public when I say, guys, let's start with the optimism and not the negativity, there are so many things to be excited about in our future. Just today, we approved nearly four hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue for dirt that had been sitting unused. If you don't think opportunities lie ahead of us, please think about the future, not the past, but our future, and that's going to take an entire community to build. There's going to be hard decisions over the next few years, and there are going to be some hard things to do, but we could be in so much worse position than to be have three billion dollars' worth of new construction on our primary employer, and to have come through two massive natural disasters with the total deaths, I believe, being one, and the total damage being to our community not devastating. Damage, yes, not devastating. And so, I'm just incredibly optimistic and enthusiastic about what the opportunities are, and I, I started with that because before I tried to explain how much certain people mean and what their history is, I just want us all to start 2021 with a breath of optimism. Nobody likes this. Nobody. Nobody likes being told how we should lead our lives, nobody likes being told that we can't go in if there's more than ten people in the building, nobody likes this, but we all have the ability to respect each other and to make the very best of it until we can start that train of optimism and opportunity that this community has ahead of it in 2021, and I'm so excited to be, uh, you know, involved in that process. But that process would not have happened without a couple of people. First, um, to Councilwoman Stevens, Lindsay, you know, we have differences in opinions, that was pretty clear, but I will never doubt that woman's heart or passion for what she did. She came, she saw, she spoke, and she gave all of her heart, and you could see it even in her walking away tonight in her tears. Um, hats off to you, Lindsay, um, in terms of what you gave to this community, and we thank you. And then Peggy. So, let's be clear, guys, if you don't understand that when we're talking about the optimism of 2021, that is coming from the incredible efforts of Mayor Breeden. Now, Peggy came to me in 2004 and showed up in my office and told me, you're going to go dance on the stage, and you're going to get to know this community, and I'm going to take you by the hand, and I'm going to show you exactly what Ridgecrest is, and it is an incredible blessing to be sitting here sixteen years later, to fill the shoes of someone who has done so very much for this community, there is no words or debt of gratitude that could ever possibly fill that void. She, single-handedly pushed the base reconstruction to happen before COVID. If you don't think that there was phone calls and personal relationships with Congressman McCarthy and Senator Feinstein and herself, and all those things that made these things happen, um, you know, Mr. Matthews, I may not be your mayor, but I'm going to bust my butt to make sure that I have all those people's phone numbers and text messages and every other speed dial I possibly can, so that if ever anything happens to this community, again, I can do exactly what Peggy Breeden did, and that is pick up the phone and get the best possible solution for our community as quickly as possible, because if they didn't pull that off, we would be talking about a completely different 2021. Completely different. And if there's any lasting legacy that Peggy Breeden needs to walk out of here with her head held very, very high, is that she gave every ounce of her heart, this is a cancer survivor who sat up here and went through everything publicly, and did it with her head held high, and I cannot offer enough thanks on behalf of this community for your service, for your character, and for what you've given to this community for all these years, not just as mayor. Thank you, Peggy. We have an incredible community. I did not know Ridgecrest from a hole-in-the-wall in 2004. I got asked to come up here and take a job, and it's become my home, and I'm so proud to be here with you guys to work together for the next couple of years and see if we can pull off some wonderful things. I'm looking forward to working with, I keep calling him chief, but he will always be, he's always going to be chief to me, because, you know, that's how we met, and, and Ron and Jed and all of the team here at the, the city, um, these are passionate people that love what they do, and they love this community, and they are not doing it because they want to hear every negative thing thrown at them they can find. So, let's grab a hold of some positivity, let's get excited for 2021, and let's make the best of what's been, uh, a definite, challenging 2020, but God bless the efforts of this city and, and this council to make sure that we've got a 2021 to look forward to. And with that, Merry Christmas?
No, don't.
Nope?
Say one more comment.
I don't, I'm, this is the public, to the public. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, please be safe, please protect your families, and with that, I believe we will be going into closed session.
Let me make one.
Mr. Mayor, I have a friendly reminder before you go into closed session.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Kyle.
So, this is Keith, uh, I just wanted to remind you that we need to take public comment on the closed session before we go into closed session, and we will need to announce, uh, make, make a, uh, report out of closed session back on the public channel when we come out of closed session.
Okay. Then I will let Mr. Mauer make comments, then we'll call for public comment.
Okay, I just want to, I, when you were talking about all the developments going on the base and everything, remind me, Ron and Kyle and I had the privilege, uh, last week of going to the groundbreaking ceremony for the, um, the new gym, the new theater, and the new, um, chapel, and, uh, they're, they're moving forward, this is an aggressive move, and, uh, they're, they're going to bring a lot of benefit to the community. It was a privilege to represent the city and go out there and pick up that shovel full of dirt, so, anyway, I thought we should mention that, so, thank you.
So much to look forward to. Okay, so we have a closed session to go into, uh, but we are required to ask for any public comment. Is there any public comment on the closed session? The closed session, and closed session report, Mr. Lamu.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, the board met in closed session to discuss the item identified on the agenda is undisclosed litigation, uh, with multiple cases, uh, the, uh, city attorney gave a report, no reportable action took place. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report, and good evening, guys.
Thank you, sir. Have a very Merry Christmas, thank you very much, and we will call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you, good night.